Tonight, we are having a public hearing for the cable television franchise renewal. This is an open meeting of the Town of Auburn Local Cable Advisory Committee. It has been conducted remotely with Governor Baker's executive order, which suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical location. Furthermore, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting.
Do you want to have a roll call vote to open the hearing?
I'm going to have a roll call vote to open the hearing. Let me read your name and actually if you're here. Aaron Keys. Doug Nelson. Jeff Magny.
Randy.
Alyssa Ryan.
Here.
All right, thank you. Okay. We also have Tom Manager Ms. Jacobson and Chris Hugo. All right. Good evening. My name is Bill Schiebler. I'm chairman of the Auburn Cable Television Advisory Committee. This is a public hearing conducted by the Cable Committee on Spectrum LLP, also known as Charter, as part of the cable license renewal process. With me tonight are fellow Cable Committee members Jeff Magny and Alyssa Ryan and Bill August, the town's cable council. Newspaper notice for the hearing was published on December 31, 2021, and January 7, 2022, copies of which have been entered into the hearing record. Charter's cable license expires in June of 2023. Federal law requires the town to engage in license renewal proceedings to identify town cable needs. The Cable Committee was delegated the task of gathering information about the town's cable needs, subject to the Select Board making the final decision on licensing matters. We will receive comments and testimony, if any, from the public concerning the town's cable-related needs and on how Charter has performed on its existing license. Any public comments will supplement the ascertainment records developed by the town. Members of the Cable Committee also have made questions or comments. We ask that you keep your comments to less than five minutes. If Charter has a representative in attendance, Charter will have an opportunity to discuss its operations in Auburn, including its past and current performance. Any questions should be directed through me as chairperson, and I will rule whether they are in order. Before testifying, please state your name and address. Should you wish to supplement your oral testimony and to provide any written comments on matters of concern, you can forward them to the Cable Committee care of the Town Hall, and upon further notice, we will keep the license renewal record open, even after the hearing is closed, to receive such comments. We also know for the record the process of ascertainment of community cable needs and interests will remain open until further notice. So welcome to the public hearing to further ascertain and address the important subject of the cable-related needs and interests of the Town of Auburn. Finally, this is an in-person and virtual online meeting. People wishing to participate remotely may access the town's meeting via the link in the hearing agenda on the town's website, or dialing in to participate via the following telephone number also posted at the town's website. 312-757-3121, access code 944-243-445. And now we can get started.
I might want to mention that there is no one in attendance here.
Currently, there is no one in attendance here in the Selectman's Room.
Overruled.
Mr. August, would you like to make a statement?
What, Bill?
Would you like to make an opening statement for us, or?
The purpose is really just to hear from the public comments about needs. The town has been developing, you know, some strong documents showing the need for increased capital support from Spectrum and increased operating support. So the town, just for the benefit of the public, is doing some diligent work identifying the needs for the possible cable license renewal term. But tonight, you know, under the state regulations, we have to give the public an opportunity to comment if anyone is here from the public or committee or town officials who want to add to some of the work being done by the town. So we're here to listen tonight.
Okay, thank you. I see we have one caller, David Salz. Would you like to make a comment? David, are you there?
You may just be.
David's on mute.
There he is.
I apologize.
No problem.
David Salz, I have no comments. That's fine. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to ask if any of the other members of your committee have any?
Alyssa or Jeff, do you have any comments you'd like to make or questions?
No comments or questions for me at this time. Thank you.
Yes, no questions or comments for me. I'm just excited to hear what people have to say and hear people to be.
Okay, thank you. Well, being that we have nobody else on the phone.
You could ask people to submit written comments to the LCAC at 104 Central Street. If the, excuse me, through the chair, I'll just throw out there that, given the weather and it is chilly out and we are doing this remotely and a hybrid, but just if you want to give the public the opportunity to submit additional written comments, Attorney August, would that be okay to do that?
Yes, yes. Because even, yes, and even after the hearing is closed, written comments are accepted under the federal renewal process, even after the hearing, there's still this ongoing process that the federal law asks us to do called ascertainment of needs. And that continues beyond the hearing and includes assembling written comments and data and information. So we very much welcome the public to submit additional comments at any time during the renewal process.
All right, thank you. So if anybody?
One question I have, if there are no other public comments, first let's see if there's someone from the public. Just, Chairman Schiebler, just flag an issue for further ascertainment work? Because much of our discussion has been on the, naturally, on how the town is, under past cable licenses, receives annual funding to have local channels, which have grown in importance over the years. The local channels have become a more vital and central part of most Massachusetts towns. And there's a lot of focus on the financial commitments during the renewal negotiations. And in hearing from different town officials and Chris Hugo about that so far. One other area that we have not really flagged as much, but it's a hot issue, I just want to flag it and welcome any input I could get from you, Bill and Chris, going forward, is the, you know, it's been difficulty, sort of a learning curve for Charter, Spectrum, to provide PEG channels in high definition. They're still not doing that in Massachusetts. They are working on it. I mean, they are floating some proposals now for the first time to upgrade your local channels or one local channel, while Comcast provides one PEG channel in HD and Verizon does one. So Charter is working on such a proposal where it would be transactional and the town would have to use some of its annual funding towards purchasing of it, actually. But one thing that makes it a little more affordable is if the town is using some internet streaming to get signals to the studio from your, let's say you have signal going from Town Hall to the studio or from a high school to the studio. If instead of relying on the old Charter video return lines, which need to be upgraded to go to HD, if the town is using an internet streaming system just to get back to the studio, that does reduce the costs of the process. And many access centers prefer that. They like to control the upstream transmission to the studio, but because when it's done with internet streaming technology, they're not so dependent on the cable company every time there's a need to tweak it, like if it's a modulator or transmitter. So one thing to flag the committee as part of our ascertainment is to what extent that is going on or can occur. It may already be in place because a lot of access centers are on their own initiative deploying that for the remote video originations. I mean, I'm not expecting an answer to that now, but I do want to flag it because it's, along with the annual funding and the negotiations, the HD PEG channel issue is, it's new. We didn't have that last time. It's new for everyone. Comcast just started doing it, first one in HD PEG in 2018. So it's, I want to just make folks aware of that as a new, but I think important renewal issue.
I saw that you had done it in Grafton and then touched on it in Charlton as well, so I know that it's being discussed locally. Thank you.
Through the chair, can I add, from the just town administration perspective, just for the record on some of the needs that we have in the town and why this is an important process for us and why we need to make sure that we have a solid cable television contract in place? So as you know, the cable for the public, the cable that we, the cable contract that we end into the agreement is for PEG, what you call PEG, which is public, educational, and government access. And for town administration, it's critical to have that type of communication with our citizens, especially during a global pandemic. I think it's become even more obvious why cable television is an important tool for reaching the public, whether it's the schools, the town government, or even members of the community. So I know from a town government perspective, we use.
From a town government perspective? I'm sorry.
Let's see back here.
What if I move over here?
Hello?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, no, that's a very important perspective. Thank you.
No, thank you. I just want to make sure we said that we rely on cable television coverage for our programs, our events, our municipal meetings, whether they're remote, they're hybrid, they're in person. This is how we let the public know what the business of doing government is, and this is how the public can participate. You no longer just have to come into our buildings. I mean, technology has made it so that you don't have to do that. So in combination with the remote opportunities and the cable television access, it's a great mechanism for us to communicate with the public. Likewise, it's a great mechanism for members of the community to go on through the community access and put events of interest to the public there. You know, we, the schools, you know, I don't want to speak for the schools, but I know the school superintendent has told me, and I believe we have an email to that effect, how important cable is for the schools and for coverage of their events. So I just want to make sure, as Bill said, it's an important point to make that this is important two-way communication. This is important communication for government to communicate with our residents and our citizenry on what's happening in local government, what's happening in the community, and what's happening at our school system. So we're grateful that we have the opportunity to have cable television. The funding that we receive from that funds some critical equipment and operations that we need to continue to provide this coverage. So thank you for that chance.
And in addition to that, the high school has the full studio and all the equipment for the kids to be learning about television production and photography and editing and a full computer lab that they have at their disposal during the day. So what we've gotten from Charter has been very beneficial to the residents of town. All righty. I guess since there's no other questions, we could.
Just, I would like to reinforce one thing Julie said because I go to a bunch of these hearings, like one a month, practically, or every other month. And the point about the COVID and the pandemic, I've heard at many hearings, some of the public health information that was really like life or death information in those first scary months, that was local in nature. For many people in the community, they didn't like know how to navigate the internet or find stuff on the internet. And the public health departments were becoming like a crucial, through the cable channels, were becoming like an essential source of pandemic information to a degree, you know. I mean, it's always been important, but I think the, as everyone says, the pandemic shined a light on the importance of telecommunications. So it's very important, and we're hearing that a lot.
Chris Hugo would like to make a comment. He's the operation manager for our local stations.
Yeah, over the course of this last contract, I believe we built the press box. Is that, was that this contract or the last contract?
This one.
So we put, Bill, can you hear me okay? Bill August?
The audio is not coming through well on that. Julie's mic is clear, but I can't hear on that one.
Okay, over the terms of the last contract, we.
New microphones on the equipment list because Julie's mic can't hear.
Yeah, it's a remote system. We haven't quite got the hybrid system running in this room yet because of the high ceilings. Over the course of the last contract, we installed the press box in the, at the high school. We installed fiber throughout the entire, well, throughout the government and educational side of the town. And we also maintain that fiber. We pick up a portion of the IT director's salary, a portion of the assistant IT director's salary. We picked up a portion of the Code Red and also a portion of the maintenance contracts for the fiber. Currently, we broadcast about 10 government meetings from three remote locations, two here in the Town Hall and one over at School Administration. Since we have fiber in every school building, every town building, we do have the option of broadcasting live from any of those locations. We can also broadcast live from the press box, from the auditorium in the high school, and with some manipulation, the press, I mean, the, it's in the high school, what's that thing called? We were talking about putting cameras in there. What is that thing called?
Oh, the presentation room.
Presentation room, thank you, yes. Just blow the mics out. Yes, the presentation room in the high school. We're also looking into putting in a system in the library. We currently have audio. We've put in an audio system in the library and have been getting quotes on putting in cameras as well.
And the trailer.
And we also have a communications trailer that we share with the fire department and with public safety. We don't have anything built into it yet. We have the skeleton there, but if we need it, we can just install a portable system. And although not through Charter, but through COVID funds, we purchased a three-camera, totally portable, remote system that can stream and go live and record. And we've covered football games with that and town meetings and things like that.
That's great.
On the access side, we cover Memorial Day, 4th of July. We cover concerts at the pavilion. We can't go live from the pavilion yet, but we do have fiber run in there, so the option is open. We have, we maintain the sound system at the pavilion in case any of the bands that come in don't have their own audio engineer. We will supply the equipment and the engineers. Beyond that, we have our own drone. We purchased the drone for the high school. We provide the high school, my counterpart with the high school is the media class. We supplied them with, I believe, $8,000 annually for them to purchase instructive material and equipment. As stated earlier, our studio is embedded in the high school, so we have 100% effort on the access side is toward the education, so the kids can access a professional studio throughout their entire school day. We also supply audio to the town's radio station, although no cable funds really go into the radio station. It's owned by the Board of Health. We do maintain it, we do deliver audio there because I do have radio experience. So.
In addition to that, the access studio is available to the public after school hours.
We have been looking into doing live religious programming through a local group called Interruption Hug. We were going to be doing a live Christmas event, but one of the band members contracted COVID and they had to cancel. But there's, we're open for any ideas on programming. I work with producers, I'll train you. We need just a minimum staff to do any kind of programming live from the high school. We're also in the, in the final steps of rebuilding Camp Gleason. It will be for additional meeting space, and we're putting in a commercial kitchen for cooking classes and cooking programs. And with any luck, we'll be able to rent the hall to generate revenues for the town. That's it.
Thank you.
Good job.
That's a great overview. Thank you.
All right. There being no other comments, again, as stated before, if the public wants to comment by written or through the Selectman's Office, they can do that at 104 Central Street, Auburn Mass, 01501. And I believe we can end this hearing at this point. Motion and the hearing?
Were there any callers? Caller 301?
Yeah, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mark, 404 St.
What was that again?
Me and him briefly. Can you tell me why they all, all you describe every channel on Charter and for the, like myself? And what was the reason for eliminating Channel 3 from Worcester? And like the Catholic channel, the Catholic TV channel, this sounds enough for almost five days. You don't want to have it fixed it?
Mark, we're currently installing a new playback and control system. With any luck, we'll be able to carry the daily mass live. Right now, what we do is we download the daily mass and reproduce it and then schedule for the next day.
Yeah, but this is coming from Boston. This is Wachau, Massachusetts.
Oh, okay, all right.
This is the daily mass from there.
Now, we don't have control over Charter's programming.
Yeah, Channel 3 and any programming that Charter covers, that's beyond our control.
I mean, they have shuffled their channels around. It could be on another channel that I'm not aware of.
Do you want to explain?
In fact, we're not allowed to regulate their channel lineup. It's a good question, though. You're not, you're in good company. Everyone asks that because that's one of the main concerns. Like you're in renewal, why don't you negotiate for that channel? This is what we people need. And it says right in the federal statute that the program lineup, we are not allowed to regulate the selection of channels, the tiering of channels. That's their private domain.
So do you have any rights, anybody right there for Spectrum?
We can convey the information, but we don't have any negotiation power over it.
Nor do we have any.
Is, I have to buy a bunch of channels. I thought you would watch. It'd be nice to be able to buy the channels I want to watch.
You're on, it's another excellent point. It's actually one of the favorite points of consumer advocates, to allow à la carte selection rather than buying a bigger bundle than you need. You know, people feel that's very manipulative. You're forced into paying more because you're buying. So again, you're speaking to the, preaching to the choir, but because of that prohibition by Congress, they didn't want 1,001 towns having different requirements all over the states and country, so they let the companies get deregulated for program lineup. And that includes exactly what you're bringing up. It's a great point, the need for à la carte purchasing. You know, they say when, the way to maximize consumer welfare is to maximize consumer choice, and you have more choice if it's à la carte, but we're not allowed to do that.
It'd be nice if you could do that.
Yeah, great. Yeah, you got to call your congressman. They're the only ones who can get a dent on that because the prohibition comes at the federal level.
Do they have any senior rates?
We have a senior rate, we have a senior rate built into the contract for low-income seniors. So if you have a threshold, you know, of what it's governed by.
So does I see the what's not sending you the mass every day now? Is that the problem?
They just cut out the, they cut out the channel. Like I said, we are, we have the option of receiving a live stream, and with the new equipment we're installing, we'll be able to, we'll be able to schedule that live stream. So we'll be able to take up where Charter left off. And Channel, I think Channel 3 is now Channel 1.
That's right, it is. And the reason why you haven't been, oh, the ME agendas, you haven't been reading them?
I'll look into that. I'll look into that. They're supposed to be read, the agendas and the bulletins are supposed to be posted and read on Channel 192, so we'll look into that.
It'd be nice if you could read the calendar on 192.
Which calendar is that?
The calendar is on 191.
What do you mean, the program schedule?
Well, if the calendar's on 191, it keeps scrolling like.
Okay, I'll look into that, too.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks a lot, Mark.
Bye.
In addition to us not being able to control what's on TV, we also have no control over the rates. That's also, you know, beyond our purview.
Right. The two things people care most about, the rates and the programming, Congress deregulating.
All right, let's see, anybody else here?
Through the chair, would you mind, because this question comes to my office all the time, would you mind just explaining briefly or having Attorney August explain it, that the cable television contract is not an exclusive contract?
All right. Want to field that one, Bill? I know you're really good at that.
So, oh, sorry, I'll take my mask down for a moment.
The non-exclusive, exclusivity of the contract.
Yes. Thank you for pointing that out because everyone just assumes, oh, we have one company, they must be giving them the exclusive rights. No, these contracts always are non-exclusive, and we reached out at your town's request, at the request of the Board of Selectmen, to Verizon, to RCN, but they're not interested in competing. But it is non-exclusive. They could compete if they wanted to, but they're just saying once, out here, no one is entering the market right now for wireline cable, unfortunately.
Satellites will be next. All right.
Thank you for pointing that out.
The board of selectmen did very proactively ask the manager through me to try to promote competition because competition always disciplines the companies a little bit and makes them more accountable. And we did that very proactively. We went to the top of the Verizon cable licensing team, and they're not seeking new licenses. And same with RCN. They are the only other company that is, provides competitive systems in mass. They are looking at competing, but only adjacent to their existing systems, and they don't have systems in your region. So that's, they're not. So, that's, they're not, they declined on that, too.
There's another caller. Al, do you want to make a comment, or? Hello? Guess we lost him.
People are logging in just to watch and not necessarily comment. If someone does, just give me their name and address. I'll make sure we got it for you.
Okay. Any other comments from anyone?
Bill, you, you said this, I think, I couldn't hear you. What is the best way for the public to submit any written comments regarding the contract renewal?
Well, again, the hearing will remain open for comments. Citizens can write to the Selectman's Office at 104 Central Street, and we'll get all that information, you know, from them.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. All right. I guess there'd be no other comments. We can close the hearing. A motion to close the hearing? Jeff?
Yeah, I, I...
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then we, again, thank you for everybody that's participated. Again, we'll keep comments open, and thank you for stopping by. This, this hearing is closed. Thank you.